I'll call this meeting of the Sedroily City Council to order. Thank you all for coming. Would you please rise and join me in the flag salute?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for the record, staff are all here. Council is present with the exception of Councilmember Judith Dunley and Councilmember Owen. Judith might be coming, I hadn't heard. Chuck is away on a family emergency. But at this time, I entertain a motion to excuse both council members.
May I make a motion to excuse Councilmember Owens and Councilmember Dunley?
Second.
A motion was made by Councilmember Lemley, seconded by Councilmember Kinzer, to excuse both council members. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar, items A through F. If there's anything on there you would like to discuss or pull off, let me know. Otherwise, you know the drill.
May I make a motion that we approve agenda items A through F?
Second.
Okay, a motion was made by Councilmember Corningay, seconded by Councilmember Lemley, to approve the consent calendar items A through F. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Carries unanimously. So, that leads us to our special presentation tonight from the Population Health Trust. David Jefferson has got a good program for us tonight, and I got a little sneak preview, so I know it's a very important issue. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening, council people. I very much appreciate being here tonight. It's a wonderful opportunity to share some of this information, and if there's something that stands out while I'm presenting that you want to stop me and ask a question, please do. Otherwise, I'll just kind of keep rolling with the information, and then we can pause and talk afterwards. But if something does stand out, it's kind of a high-level show, and you'll probably be asking, you know, "What about that? What about that?" And I'll gladly fill that in for you. So, thank you very much, and here we go. So, the Population Health Trust came into formation in 2015. We were appointed by the Skagit County Board of Health. And this is the first time that the Skagit County has ever had a health advisory board in the history of Skagit County. So, here are our members. Currently, we have 32 members on the board, and they're from a variety of service sectors, but it's a group of people that came together to look at, how do we improve health for everybody that lives in Skagit County? It was a tall order. This work has been in process for seven years about, with several groups before this group. But finally, at one point, Skagit County said, "We'll put some resources behind making this happen," and therefore, Skagit County stepped up, and we're considered the backbone agency for this work. And I put this slide up here with logos, because sometimes people, when they see logos, they go, "Oh, yeah, that's who that person is." So, it's associated with the folks. And most of these people contribute money to the Population Health Trust to help us do some of the small programmatic issues. And so, we get about $60,000 from the members in here. So, the hospitals tend to be some of the bigger contributors, but United Way has given us money, and Community Action has given us money. Like I said, we serve as the backbone, and we're kind of this relationship with the public. Historically, counties have had health advisory boards, but they're usually restricted to public health. And the way that we designed our board is, we didn't want it to be strictly at the service of public health. We wanted the board to be in service to the community. So, it's set up to us to work together to do things to improve health for our community members. It's a different setup, completely voluntary, and it's still, you might say, a work in progress. We've been doing this for about two and a half years right now. This is a slide I like to put up here, it's somewhat provocative, in that at any given time, our community is doing the best that it can to produce the health that we have. Schools do the best job they can, the hospitals do the best, our social services do the best job. We're all doing the best. But there is also an opportunity for us to do slightly better. And that's the idea behind the trust, is how do we find a way to do better? And in particular, we like to think of, even for our next generation, that, you know, how can it be better for them? And I think a lot of folks get behind that quite often. So, to get there, one is, we want to think about Skagit County, but in its entirety. And this is one of the first times that Skagit County has done a plan in its entirety looking at health. It was a big bite, it was a tough job, but what we did is, we did a community needs assessment of all of Skagit County. Curious thing that keeps coming out is, which is of course natural, is people say, "Well, what about Sedroily? What about Anacortes? What about Mount Vernon?" So, people see Skagit County-wide data, but they often want to see, "What does that mean for my particular community?" We have more work to do. Much of the data that we looked at and the assessment that we did was county-wide data. So, in some sense, we might be missing some pieces. Here's our hope: common goals, alignment, and there's this idea behind collective impact, meaning that it's more than just sitting in the room together. It's figuring out, how do we work together? Sign MOUs, break our silos to some degree, and figure out, how do we do this work? If you ever got three hospitals in the room, they will tell you, they are natural, not enemies, but they're not known to partner very closely with each other. They've been sitting together for two and a half years in the room now, figuring out how to work together. So, we're making some progress. Here's where we want to get to. This is somewhat what we would say is a community plan, and if I had this all really pretty, you would see kind of a community plan here. But what we'd like to get is a community plan, and then each community partner has a piece of it. The Board of Health has a piece of it. The medical community has a piece. The socioeconomic service sector people have a piece. Education has a piece. But we all do some part of that plan together. But if we can get a plan that kind of points us all in a direction, we have these opportunities for synergy that we have probably didn't have in the past. So, we did an assessment. This document on the right is the 10 priority items that we boiled it down to. I'm just about ready to release that, I was just editing that today. 13 priority items, 10 priority items, they break out a little bit like this. Oops, sorry. We have one in particular that's related to prenatal care, three that are related to youth issues: youth mental health, youth marijuana use, and youth violence. The rest of these are youth and adult issues: nutrition, access to care, and obesity's issues. There's two that are not on here, which came out as high priorities, which are housing and living wage job. And they're just naturals as being really, really important to the health of our community. They're very hard to take on, so we didn't quite take those on right from the start. But we went out to the community, and we asked them, you know, "Did we get this right?" And we held community listening sessions. We were over at Phil Bachmann School over here, and we were held a community listening session there, and community members came out, and we asked them, "Did we get this right?" One thing they kept saying is, "What about this thing called opioids?" And we started paying attention to that. So, in this next slide, you'll see, this is kind of how the community voted when they said they thought were more priorities. And the community over here said, "Housing and living wage job was a pretty high priority." And then, all these other items. And at the top is the list of the different groups that we met with. The first one is Skagit County Children and Family Coalition. It was a group of about 80 people, and we tested our work with those folks, and they gave us some really good feedback before we took that to the community. But, they also said, "What about these items?" And pulled out these opioids. So, we thought, given that this was a priority issue in the community, it was getting a lot of attention at the federal level, at the state level, we decided, "Let's address what's most important to the community first, we'll start addressing our issues second." But it was kind of this decision, it didn't quite match all the data we had, but because it was emergent, and it was called out by our people, we decided to address that one first. So, we formed this group called the Opioid Work Group Leadership Team, and we got about 32 people that were community stakeholders that had a role in this: hospitals, pharmacies, coroner, substance abuse treatment programs, mental health providers, EMS director. They all kind of got together and said, "So, what's the deal with this?" And what I'd like to share with you next is some of the data that we reviewed that got us to some of the solutions. This work was six to eight months of us sitting down and talking about the details, and members stayed there for that period of time and got to this thing called an action plan. So, our former director, Mark Raca, was really helpful with getting data for us, and he ran all the EMS data. And one thing that came out was, they were dispatching ambulances over once a day to alcohol and drug-related incidences. So, that's probably still happening. Another thing that was happening is, they were carrying a drug called Narcan. And Narcan reverses an opioid overdose. In other words, it saves your life if you get Narcan. They're carrying it now. So, they were administering Narcan every 4.5 days. In other words, they were saving a person's life every 4.5 days. So, this was amazingly significant. And the notion behind that all that goes is, if you can save a life, there's potential for that person then to get the treatment services they need at a later time. So, that's why we think that the Narcan is so important. Dr. Connie Davis from Skagit Regional Health, they pulled some of their data. And they've never done that before, but they pulled their data and shared it with us. And in particular, this one over here is the 2013, 14, and 15 is ER visits with a diagnosis of drug poisoning, an overdose. And they were up to 442 per year. So, it's more than one a day arriving at the emergency room for an overdose. Quite alarming. Another one that's listed over here is opioid-related infections. I'm not sure if people have heard this on the news lately, but if you get a heart infection related to opioid drug use, IV drug use, one heart infection costs about $100,000. And it's not guaranteed that that's going to lead to that person being in sobriety later on. There's a high probability that person can return to the hospital again with a second heart infection. One heart infection, $100,000, and they had 81 infections that year. Not to say that that's the same one, but their rate of infections were going up. Dr. Connie Davis was telling me that sometimes these people are in the hospital for 10 to 14 days, because they are so sick. So, they're amazingly expensive. And then, the other stuff is newborn babies being exposed to opioids. So, again, a concern for our community. This is an interesting slide, and I'll tell you something about the historical data. This is substance abuse treatment admission data for all of our Skagit County people, and these are the different years from 2011 to 2015. Alcohol, which is the blue line, has always been our number-one drug that we admitted people to treatment programs. It's been the drug. In 2014, opioids surpassed alcohol as the number-one drug that was being admitted into treatment programs. That's a pretty big deal. So, the majority of people between these two drugs getting into our treatment centers were related to opioids. The line at the top are just totals of all the drugs. These are the number of people that were admitted in Skagit County, that were Skagit County residents that were admitted into treatment. The University of Washington conducted a survey of needle exchange people. There's a needle exchange program, people go and exchange needles. But they did a survey, because they wanted to know what's going on with the folks. This question in particular is, were you hooked on prescription medications before you started using heroin? And a lot of people, opioid drugs, there's the prescription medication, and then there's the street medication. Turns out that in Skagit County, 57% of the people that were using heroin started with prescription medications. Now, this was at one point in time. This survey has not been repeated yet. So, one thing that we would like to look at is, does this data hold up true if we asked this survey year after year, what do these numbers look like? The bars that are going across are the age. So, here's the primary age of the people that were hooked on those drugs. So, it's folks that are about 28 years old. So, we got kind of a younger population that are using these kinds of medications. The other question they had was, "Did you want help?" And they asked the folks, did they want help? And it turns out, 67% said that they were somewhat interested in getting help. So, a lot of folks say, "Yeah, I'm pretty sick." But truth is, you know, if the right kind of help came around, I would get help. The needle exchange program that's circulating right now, they provide information and what they call brief intervention, and they do some kind of assessments. And they've gotten about 20 people into treatment as a result of the needle exchange program. So, they develop the poor, and then kind of offer them the services, and people get more ready to do those services. So, it's working. This is the number of needles exchanged, and this turns out is already a little bit old data. This is from 2016. But it turns out that this number is leveling off in our county. This is about the number of needles that are being exchanged. What we don't know here is, how many people does that represent? Because people will come in and exchange from multiple people. But we know that that's the number of needles that are being used by the people here in our area. And this isn't diabetic needles. They said no to these, so these are people that are using probably mostly heroin with a little bit of amphetamines. I have this slide, and Erin, I'm just not sure if I can navigate this one, but if I can get here, what I want to show you is the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Institute from the University of Washington just released this slide yesterday, and they're aggregating some information. And the purple line that you see there are the number of hydrocodone prescriptions that are written in the state of Washington. And over there at that number, is it, here's the part that I'm not exactly sure, I'm not sure if it's prescriptions or number of pills, but there's 42 million pills being prescribed in 2014 on that date. So, one of the things that you think about with that is, think about the number of pills that are in circulation in our state that are of that quantity. So, one of our goals is to reduce the number of medications that are out there. So, there's this thing called a drug take-back program. And one of the things that we're aiming for is to get these number of medications off the street. So, back to the slide set, Erin. I'll go to the next slide here. Here's our priorities that came out of this six-month work. And one thing we want to do is better home storage and a take-back program. Oops, sorry about that. We want to introduce this evidence-based practice called scrutiny, brief intervention, referral to treatment. I'm currently working with our five medical providers in the community, and in the month of May, our medical community may decide to implement this program at Island Hospital, Peace Health, Skagit Regional Health, C Mar, and Planned Parenthood. And if we got that going, we'll be the only county in Washington that has implemented this evidence-based practice countywide. This will allow us to start having effective communication with people that come into the medical community about addressing their opioid issues. It's amazing. If we can pull this off, and we can get people to say yes to this, we're going to kind of change the direction of health in Skagit County. We want to do more of this thing called medication-assisted treatment. There's a medication out there known as buprenorphine. It's the gold standard of treatment. People that are on buprenorphine treatment have a recovery rate of about 70%. That's quite a bit better than our abstinence-based programs. So, it is a wonderful way to start people down the path of recovery. And finally, we would like to work with our criminal justice system to get the medications in there. And Skagit Regional Health is starting this thing called evidence-based prescribing practices. And in the simplest terms is, when you go to see a doctor and you have pain, the doctor doesn't give you a prescription for 50 medicaid, 50 pills, they give you a prescription for 10 pills. So, they reduce the number of pills that are out there and give you just the right amount, so that a lot of these don't end up circulating. It's more complicated than that, but that's the basics. Those are two reports that we have in circulation. You have the blue one. The blue one is a call to action. We have 32 action steps. I've shown you four of them, but there's 32 action steps that we're asking the community to look at and see, what can they do? And then, here's where we are today. We're working on that plan. Skagit County Board of Health passed a resolution approving those 32 action steps. We're promoting our Trends website. There's this thing called the 1115 Demonstration Waiver that came from the federal government. We're working with them to, there's some money associated. We're trying to get their money. So, we're working with those folks to figure out, how can we get some of that money flowing into our county to address opioid issues? And finally, our group is going to start looking at child and maternal health as our next priority item. This is our Skagit County Trends site. Again, I'm not sure I can kind of show you this whole thing, but we bought this live data website. It's available to anybody with a browser. And at any given time, anybody can go here and look at data. We have 160 data points that were selected by our community partners. And this is one data point that I just pulled up for you to look at, but this is the median age of population in Skagit County. And if you cursor over the blue line, you'll see that we're at about 42 is the median age compared to the state and the nation, which is about 37. So, we're kind of an aging population compared to other areas. But there's 160 data points over here for you folks to consider. So, that's kind of the Population Health Trust contribution to our work in Skagit County. Am I doing pretty good there on time?
Pretty good.
Okay.
I think so, we can just keep going.
Okay, thank you, thank you. The last slide here is, there's this organization called Robert Wood Johnson, I think sometimes people hear about that. They do this thing called county health rankings, and they rank counties against counties all across the nation. And we went from 13th to 9th in the last report. And here's the part that, I really shouldn't say this, but I don't know why, but I like it. We're 9th now, we're in the top 10. So, we're having our epidemiologists look at how they weight the data now to give us some more information about what changed in particular in Skagit County, so we can know why we went from 13th to 9th. Turns out that the healthiest counties are San Juan, one, King County, two, and then the rest is Snohomish, Island, Thurston, and Skagit. We're kind of like the top counties in the state. If you look at how this has bubbled, it's all the counties that are about right here that are the healthiest ones in Skagit, in the state of Washington. There's my questions. Thank you.
Well, David, that was awesome, and your contribution, that website. I always like to get data, because people feel this way about something, or they feel that way, or I think it should be this. But the data that you provide is a really useful tool, so it's good to see it out there and available, so we can evaluate things in a very objective manner. Counsel, you have questions?
No, I just have a comment. So, I appreciate hearing you again. I was at Skagit Leadership on Friday, we presented, and it was fantastic. Great discussion.
Context.
Yes. But the work that you're doing, the education, that's really key. You know, this kind of research, getting it out to people, getting it out to organizations, this is what can actually tip the balance, and so, tip the scale. So, I think that this is really great that you're doing that.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. And the opportunity to be here in front of you tonight as another audience that, you know, gets to participate in this makes a huge difference, because you folks will probably use the website and find ways to collaborate as this goes forward. We're two and a half years into this, so we're just developing and enriching our partnerships. So, I sure hope that we can continue this conversation as we go on. So, thank you very much.
I had a question for you. I was wondering if you could, I mean, it's nice that we'd be able to look at the website and see, but is there, like, could you update us on, it seems like you have so much going on? Would you update us regularly on what's going on, like, just send us emails or?
Love to. One thing we're doing right now is, we have a newsletter that we're sending out to the community about every month. If okay with you, I will sign you all up to our newsletter, you'll get a little email, and they just kind of accept you into the site. I can work with your staff to get all your email addresses and add you all to the serve.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
I have a kind of a practical question myself. I've heard that if you have excess medications, if you put them in coffee grounds and in your trash, that's a good way to get rid of them.
Yeah, and it works. It's, they're always trying to find ways to make sure that those don't end up in, like, septic tanks or in the water system. Those are the two places where we don't want them to end up. That is, like, if you have nothing else, it's a great way to get rid of the medications.
I know it made my druggie son upset that I did that.
And, you know, it's really appreciated, because, you know, I think, when I told this story, it's amazing the number of people say, "That's my family member, too." We were recently at the E DAS News Fair, and we had six people come up to us and say, "That's my family." And we weren't even trying to advertise, they just came up and said, "That's my family." So, this is affecting all of us in a big way. Yes.
So, is it true that our police department is a part of that L?
LT.
LT.
I think one of your police participants was participant early on, but not sure they stayed throughout the whole process. All the names of the people that participated are on the opening page.
Go right on. Thank you.
So, David, when we talked earlier, you talked about the problem of after hospice. Could you expound on that a little bit for the council?
Can you elaborate a little bit more?
And actually, maybe I made that up. Maybe that was Chief Klinger who I should give credit for that.
Okay.
Dean, could you talk about that a little bit, please?
Recently, we've had an unfortunate chance to deal with hospice. And one of the issues that, and nothing against hospice, hospice is a great organization. Without them, it'd been really tough to manage some issues, and all their employees are fantastic. But one of the things with hospice, especially that we see out in the field, is we deal a lot with cancer issues in hospices in there. And managing the pain and making the patient comfortable, they do a lot of it with the opioids. And the problem is, that we've noticed, is at the end of life there, once the patient has passed, there's no means, and there's no communication from hospice except that, "No, we don't want it back, or we can't take it back." Maybe there should be some type of handoff between your organization, their organization. Here's what to do when that time comes. This is how you get rid of this, so that there's something else in the contract that you sign with hospice, so that they know what to do after the fact. Because, you know, for the first little while, there's going to be, you know, there's a lot to think about going on right then. But as time goes on, they start taking care of items. One of the items is, what do I do with all this? Because it's, they give you a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's a lot to deal with, and families don't, aren't usually sure what to do with all those medications, so. to do with all those medications, so.
If you don't mind, I have some good news for you. You have a fan in our new coroner, Haley Thompson.
Haley, yeah.
Haley has brought that to our attention recently. We had a take back meeting with some stakeholders this week. Sheriff Real Wykow was there, who's helped with the take back sites around Skagit County. And she brought up exactly that issue, that when you, at hospice or a death scene, sometimes an elderly person, they'll go in and there are mountains of medications. And the police don't want to take it, EMS doesn't want to take it, the family doesn't know what to do with it, the coroner doesn't have a means to get rid of it. So that's on our agenda, is to solve that problem. And there's a couple of, there's a couple of things out there that aren't terribly complicated that we're going to see how we get that in there. And Skagit County Environmental Health has contracts with a couple of nursing homes and some, I don't know if they have contracts with all the hospice, but they have a contract to go in, pick up unused medications and get them to a disposal. I'll talk with our environmental health people and see what we got going on with hospice because we might be able to establish a small contract with them to help take care of that because they got like this amount.
Yeah, or even just an informational letter on what to do.
Yeah.
You know, would be helpful.
Wonderful.
David, what do you do with the liquids? I know we're here at Cedar Valley Police Department, you can drop off pills, but we don't take liquids apparently.
There's a new drop box that is being proposed to use. And if we get our way, pharmacies can opt to put one of these in their, in their facilities. And they're designed with a liner that can take liquid medications. So if we get those, they can put liquid medications in there and let it just be in there. They have to keep them in the bottle, they can't pour them, you know, but they can put them in there. There's other means, there's, the same company offers, I can't remember the name of it, but it's a, like a bag, it's a disposal and you can pour the medications into this bag, zip it up closed, and that takes care of the disposal. And they offer that service if they end up having it. Our people at our drug take back sites at the police stations right now, they have to separate the liquids from the pills because they can't put both in the same bin.
Well, and as I understand it, you know, we're still driving these drugs to an incinerator site, I think in Pierce County, is that right?
You're driving them to Everett.
Okay, Everett, alright.
And then Everett's driving them over to Spokane.
Alright, I know we had a contract for a little while with somebody, I thought, in Pierce County, but I guess what I was going to say is if Skagit County Environmental Health is picking some up, it would, sure be nice if we were coordinated and we weren't redundantly driving our little baggie of drugs to an incinerator site when somebody else is already going.
Let's talk about that because these are the kind of things that we want to have more relationships so that we can make these things easy. Thank you.
I think Rick had a comment.
In the funeral industry, and a lot of times, you know, with hospice and things, they may not always respond to the scene at a death. The family would call them and they know, "Well, we were there four hours ago," or they said, "No, we don't need you here, we know that the person has passed away and that." So a lot of times, they're not there, law enforcement doesn't respond, the coroner doesn't respond. So a lot of times, we are responsible for asking the family and they go, "Can you take this? What do we do with them?" So we get involved with doing that too. And it's not really, you know, and we're going, well, yeah, meds and things, we put with cat litter and water and just kind of let them absorb and make a glob kind of thing. But yeah, what do we do with that? Turn them over to the coroner's office or the sheriff's department or something. But yeah, so some sort of program, as Dean was saying, especially with hospice where more of those medications are involved, need to be instituted and a plan kind of set up and followed.
Thank you for that. I see a new partner in our work because we haven't considered funeral homes as having a role, but that's wonderful. That's one more way that we can find to, you know, make contact, develop relationships and find ways to make sure that those get off the street. And it needs to be easy.
Yeah.
Needs to be easy. Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you so much for coming. Very informative.
Thank you.
And I think we did some learning here too.
Appreciate it. Anytime you want, I'll come back at your service.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Indeed. So this brings us to the public comment, item five. Anybody care for a public comment tonight? Yes, sir. If you can come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Limit your remarks to about three minutes. And remember you're addressing the council and not engaging in question answer.
My name is Dan Gerhard. I live up by Big Lake, Oakley Court. I'm a member of Skagit Co-Housing, a new nonprofit corporation that's trying to develop co-housing in Skagit County. As yet, we don't know where we will find suitable land to build our development. However, we feel that wherever we might locate, our kind of community development would add value to the surrounding neighborhood. At this time, none of the major municipal governments in Skagit County have city codes that allow provisions for co-housing. And so one of the things that we would like to do, if you would be interested in exploring this, would be to see if we can figure out a way to, starting with Cedar Way, coming up with ways that we address co-housing as part of the city code. I have some information about co-housing if you're not familiar with it, that I leave you. I also have a copy of Bellingham City Codes where they addressed and changed their city codes back in 2000 or about that, when a group in Bellingham wanted to build a co-housing community there. I visited the community in Bellingham and it's a wonderful community, the lifestyle, the values that they represent. And the, what they worked out as far as codes with Bellingham assured that there would be a high standard of quality applied to co-housing and that it would be appropriate within the neighborhood in which it was located. If you're interested in copies of those things, I have those available also. And then if you have questions, I would be glad to answer them if you wanted to do that or if you could.
So Stan, if you have, if you have copies that you want to leave with me, I'll make sure that all the council members get a copy of that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just ask, what a basic definition of co-housing is? A basic definition of co-housing, what exactly is co-housing?
It's an intentional community that lives together. There's, the homes are owned by each individual family. They usually tend to be a little bit smaller square footage, either duplex or townhouse style, that's cheaper to build. But all the home units are smaller. There's also a common house that has other facilities, laundry, a couple of extra guest rooms so that you don't have to have that bedroom that you don't use unless kids come home. They usually share a couple of common meals a week. Bellingham Co-Housing has a wonderful common shop with all the tools that I crave. Common community garden, children's play area. Parking is at the periphery of the property so that right around the homes themselves, it's just pedestrian traffic.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else have a question?
No.
If you leave that with us, I'll make sure that everybody gets a copy. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment this evening?
I just have three comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'll close the public comment period. No public hearing, nothing unfinished. So for new business, I guess I'd like to take a poll here. We don't really have anything on our agenda for our next work session. So does the council want to pass on that one or do you want to have a roundtable again? Say that again? We don't have a topic. We don't have material for the next work session, so we could either roundtable or we can cancel it. I'm just looking for some guidance for that.
I personally would be in favor of canceling. Ditto.
Okay, it seems like we have consensus on that. Committee reports, unless I've missed something. Seems like we're going pretty fast tonight. Okay, Sergeant.
Good evening. Not a whole lot fortunately happened. Last week, I got a call from Council of Burnekey about someone called her regarding the semi trucks. Aaron, did that get the report that Officer Eddie gave, did that get them, did that get? Okay. Well, what I did is I, after that phone call, I asked to get a printout of the first quarter of commercial vehicle inspections that this department's done. So the first quarter, the first three months of this year, we have done 51 inspections of commercial vehicles. So it's about 17 a month. Of those 51, 11 of those trucks were taken out of service for either safety violation or logbook violation. We actually got one truck driver, I believe he was out of Canada on a DUI. So that was a good catch. The percentages of those were 15% of the 51 were US motor carriers and 36% were, or excuse me, 71% were Canadian, 29 were US. So the majority of the trucks that we stopped were out of Canada. Now, other complaints we've gotten from these is, you know, we'll stop a truck and unfortunately, coming down Highway nine through Highway 20 out to Cook Road, there's really no good stop place to stop a 50-plus foot tractor trailer and truck. So we filled in several complaints from citizens about, you know, the truck themselves. Then when we're out there stopping cars, we get complaints because we pulled the truck over and they had to drive around it. So it's kind of hard to appease everybody.
I've recently noticed a truck stopping in the central turn lane on Cook Road.
Yeah.
That's the only place they have.
And a lot of times, we'll try to get them moved to, we'll use Metcalf Street a lot or we'll take them out to Janice Field, but it does take time. And when we do the inspections, sometimes that takes up to two officers because the one doing the inspection is crawling around on his back or belly underneath the vehicle. And just for safety reasons, if he comes across, you know, somebody hauling a bunch of drugs, you know, they're going to be a little more amped to protect that or do whatever they need to do, not go to jail. So it takes up a little time. The question was asked of me as to why do we only have one officer doing those inspections? The training was three weeks long in Shelton. It cost a little over $7,000 to send him to Shelton for three weeks. On top of that, they have to do about six months of training with the State Patrol, what we call field training with a certified inspector already. So it takes about nine to 10 months to get that person up and running to do those inspections on their own. So, you know, the first quarter, we did 51, and I promise you, this time last year, we did zero. So we're actually making progress. It's a slow but steady progress. We have Officer Eddie, we give him about eight hours a week of overtime at his discretion to come in and do specifically vehicle inspections. That's where he's not taking any other calls for service. Our fear is, is we don't want to put too much onto him to where we burn him up or burn him out because he is a valuable, very valuable tool and we don't want to lose that tool. So we're trying to just make sure everything works well and learn this process. So in addition to that, Cedar Way is the only agency outside of State Patrol in Skagit County that has this tool. So it's kind of a big plus for us as well. But outside of that, that's what I have for the police department.
Thank you so much for doing that.
Yeah, really.
Anytime.
Chief Klinger.
Time to give the council a little update on the fire. Aaron, we've got some pictures up here. The fire was toned out to us on the 17th at 3:24 in the morning. And this is what the crews saw when we first rolled up. This is the backside of the building. This is taken from Woodward Street. It took approximately two and a half hours to bring the fire under control. And then we went through the mop up stage. We were there till about 10:30, 11 o'clock doing the mop up, but we had people there all night long also just to monitor. We had a total of 53 firefighters on scene. Those were from five different agencies. It was 17 pieces of apparatus. We had the city of Cedar Way, of course, with 25 people, the city of Burlington with four, the city of Mount Vernon with two people, Fire District Eight with 14, and Fire District Four, which is close to Big Lake, with eight personnel. On top of all those, we also had city crews. We had Nathan and some of the guys from the street department were there. Aaron and the mayor were there. And I don't know how many police officers were there. I think they were, they were all over the place. So they were doing all kinds of stuff. We ended up shutting traffic down through most of the town. That's why we had to get Nathan and his crew out. And then with the amount of water that we flowed, we were estimating it close, approximately 350,000 gallons were used. So that water had to go somewhere and plus all the ash and debris, it was clogging some of the storm drains. And we had to have crews out there cleaning those out before we started flooding other businesses down the road. So it was, it was an all hands. Everybody from the city was there doing something just about. The fire, if you want to go to the next picture, this is, the ladder trucks just arriving. So this picture's about 10 minutes into, into the call. And so you can see the whole back end of the building there. This is still taken from Woodward Street. It is fully engulfed. Over on the side of the building, oh, I think I got it. Right, right over in here, there's also a downed power line that is jumping and arcing that we can't get close to the building yet until we got PSE there to shut that off. Okay, and right there in that corner is also the Cascade natural gas meter. So there's a lot of, a lot of issues we were dealing with right then. And so right now, we just have the one truck, the one crew setting up. You can see them right there, but that's as close as they could get to, because of the wires. And we actually pulled them away because the issue that you're dealing with is, you figure as tall as that building is, you time that, times it out as to the fall distance. So that's what's known as the collapse zone. So we have to keep everybody outside of that collapse zone. So this is, like I said, is about 10 minutes in, and then the next one. This is about probably 15 minutes in. The truck was just getting set up, 15 to 20 minutes in. And you can see it, it's now coming out the sides of the building. It had already ventilated itself through the, through the top. And this is probably about 25 to 30 minutes in. The crews are setting up. We have the ladder truck is spraying here. We have Burlington monitor setting up here. And we had the other Cedar Way unit over here with the monitor spraying. Mount Vernon's ladder truck hasn't arrived yet. They didn't arrive until almost a half hour into it is when they finally got there. We got them set up. So this was probably right about 3:50 in the morning. This is the front of the building here. This is the front of the building here. This is on Metcalf Street. And then, the next picture, this is, it's kind of hard to see. This is probably right about 5:30 or so. You can see Mount Vernon's ladder truck in the background. So, from about the time we got there, it took about two and a half hours pretty much to where that was out, to where things had kind of settled down a little bit. And then, the last picture I got, this is, this is what it looked like the next morning. This is right around, I guess, probably about 7:00 in the morning. But what I want to show you is that crack right there.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's where it started to go. And as the morning went on, that crack started to enlarge. And it was several factors in that, the weight of the awning pulling down on this. And right underneath there is where that cougar statue was that just would not go out. I'm telling you, that was, that was some good wood there because that, we, I don't know how many thousands of gallons we put on that cougar alone. But it was about 11:30, 11:45 when the front of the building finally did give way. And fortunately for us, instead of doing a pancake out, it started to tip out and it came straight down. So, it started, so the debris didn't go into the other buildings like we were afraid it was going to. We thought it was going to fall in and go through the shops on the other side, the falling bricks. But we were really fortunate. The only fire damage to the other businesses in town is we melted a little bit of awning right here on that building. And we did break their window, but that was going, it's going through the building checking, make sure there was no fire through there. But that was the only fire damage was melted awning. So, does the council have any questions about what we did? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that.
Yeah, the street light there was half melted and it worked up until the point the building collapsed.
I remember. I was wondering, do you have an explanation why there wasn't more damage to the building next door?
We're just that good. We were able to, yeah, we were able to keep it contained in there. Think of this as a chimney. The brick kind of held it in there. The, the walls are, they're a common wall building. But we were able to get enough water on it quick enough to, to keep it from radiating over. It would have got worse if that side of the building would have collapsed. Luckily, and you can see it in here, the trusses are still in place. We lost one truss in the back of the building. And if you look, if you go down there tonight and look up, you'll see there's actually a hole on, on the, be the north side of the building where some bricks had fell out. That's where we lost, the only truss we lost in the building. And that's what kept that, that in place, the wall from falling onto there. If it would have fell onto there, we would have lost a lot more. We would have had damage in those buildings. But we were really fortunate not to get any, any extension into there, so.
What's kind of a plan for demolition?
Well, it was, actually, Aaron can answer that question better. He was talking to the owner today. I think they're hoping this week sometime maybe, or...
So, they're, you know, it's more complicated than we might have hoped, obviously. The common wall is pretty problematic from a demolition plan and not destroying the Brady Building to the south. The steps necessary between now and the crew actually beginning the work are, you know, there's an existing PSE meter that I believe was installed to run Christmas lights that needs to be decommissioned. The gas company removed the gas meter, but they left the gas stub out about 18 inches above the ground, right in the fall area. They've got to schedule that work. I believe that's going to happen yet this week to, to get that decommissioned below grade.
I guess my main question is to get those walls, to get them to fall inward instead of, is you cut those trusses or something? That's what's basically holding those walls. So, you're going to support those outer walls to get them to fold in on themselves and cut trusses, or what?
Well, so, so, once the utilities are addressed, the environmental analysis has been done to deal with any potential asbestos, the owner then has been directed to contract with a competent demolition crew. At the same time, he has hired a structural engineer to advise them and will develop a plan based upon that crew's experience and equipment. So, you know, they've got the documents necessary to get the permit. They're going to need access to water. They're probably going to need most of Woodworth Street there. And, you know, I'll let you know as soon as we have the date for the beginning of demolition. Last I heard, they're estimating two days of kind of active demolition and then several days of cleanup.
So, the Fire Department, this particular building, and we do this on all of the buildings in town, is we've been, we've been fighting this fire for over 20 years in training and going through what if, when this happens, we'll do this, when this happens, we'll do this. And so, the, the crews have just done an outstanding job. And they, when this came in, they, they knew, they'd already fought this fire before. They knew what to do and where to put the trucks and what they had, the procedures they had to take place. So, you know, Todd's done a really great job and all the guys have done a great job over the years getting ready for this, you know, and I can't say enough about them. We went through here and nobody got injured. There were three things we've, when we pulled up here, that nobody got hurt, no other businesses. We didn't lose any other businesses and we didn't destroy any equipment. We got two out of three. We did break a nozzle and some hose, but I mean, it's...
And some bunker gear.
And some bunker gear. It, we pumped a lot of water. Like I said, we had to call PUD and ask them to turn on the other pumps up at the reservoir because we were, we were putting such a strain on the water system. And, but we had, to the entire county luckily, knock on wood, there was no other call going on in Skagit County for the fire service during this whole fire. We got really lucky. We were able to get everybody's resources and no other department had to worry about other calls going on, so.
Chief, is there any indication of cause?
Not at this time. We know where, but we don't know what, simply because you, it's, the building's too unsafe to go in there and do what you would normally do to, to determine what caused the fire. We have turned the building over to Skagit County Fire Marshal. They're the lead investigator on this for us. And they're hoping, I got an email from Bonnie earlier today, that they're hoping to get in there in about three weeks. So, it's going to, they're going to have to wait till after it's down before they actually go in there, start taking apart pieces, so.
The funny thing about the cause is the chief doesn't know the cause. I don't know the cause, but I've talked to about 25 people who are sure they know the cause and every one of them says it's something different, so. So, there's all kinds of crazy rumors out there that are based on absolutely zero evidence. They just think that's it. Thanks, Dean. Anything else?
No, that's it.
John.
Well, I wasn't available to help with the fire. I was probably the only one not there. I apologize. I was out almost all of last week with the flu. I thought we were through with that flu all winter, then out of nowhere, I got hit. So, I think that makes 100% of staff now has had the flu. So, I'm a little bit behind on some, a lot of project stuff going on. Only thing that I thought I'd talk to the council about today is, it's springtime, so every, every year, we get some people that want to go into the Brickyard Creek area in their backyard and cut down a danger tree or clear out some vegetation for better views or expand their landscaping or, or just throw their landscaping debris in the creek or something to that effect. So, we're going to send out a letter this year saying, hey, you know, we realize you're adjacent to the creek. You know, it's a regulated, protected area. So, if you have any concerns, contact Public Works Department ahead of time. Thanks for, thanks for your understanding. So, we haven't, we haven't quite put the language together yet and we'll probably cycle that past a few eyes before it goes out because there'll be a lot of people and those peoples, we want to make sure that nobody gets a letter thinking that they're being accused of doing anything. Just sort of a reminder to people that live along the creek that, hey, you need to keep back from the buffer with your landscaping, except for what's of course existing. Whatever's already there, we just leave alone. But if there's, if there's native vegetation that's not on their property especially, we want to make sure that they're respecting that area. So, that's one little thing that's coming along I thought I'd mentioned. That's all I got.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Mark. We've talked enough today.
If you've been out south of town on Highway 9 in the last few days, you know that we've had traffic control working on the final cleanup items on the project down there. The guardrail has been installed. We patched the asphalt where we had to widen it a little bit to accommodate that. We're also working on a splitter island. Unfortunately, the contractor built it wrong the first time again after the initial instructions. So, they're going to have to come back and do traffic control one more time. We don't have a date yet. It's perhaps Friday. But that should do that and we'll be done with that project after that and beginning the closeout paperwork on it. David Lee and his crew are getting ready for the contract on the Cascade Trail from Hodgins to SR9 South. They'll be starting that work, we think, in late May. We don't have an actual contractor schedule yet, but that'll be about a three-month project. As, as you know, I've been busy writing grants and whoo. I got five of them done and they're in. Submitted three today. The mayor signed those this morning. And we have one more to go. It's the TIB Emergency Repair Project. We've been able to identify well over the $50,000 maximum available, hoping to submit that tomorrow and get some, some money out of that to help us with our pothole patching around town. Beyond that, we're in the design phase for the sewer project and preliminary stuff for the sidewalk project and just have plenty going on there. Nathan's crews, in addition to doing fire support, have been preparing for the Chip Seale project. And tonight, you awarded the pulverization project for Alexander Street, the blocks between Township and out to 11th. That work will happen sometime in the next two or three weeks. We'll pulverize that and grate it. People will be able to drive on it. We hope to have that repaved by, by early June. So, that's what's happening in Public Works.
Thank you, Mark. Aaron?
Yeah, just a few things. One, you never look forward when you're in my position to getting a call from either the fire or the police departments in the night. And that call came in over before 4:00 AM. And I could see the golden orb in the window, but the message was there's a very real possibility we'll be losing one or more buildings downtown tonight or this morning. So, one of the things I found quite remarkable is not only how the Fire Department's command structure works so well together and the advanced planning works so well together, but having the ability to get the Public Works crews out there averted definite harm. I mean, we were within, I think about an inch of flooding the Woolly Market and the bakery with some really nasty black soot-filled, just stinky water. And then, how the community responds. You know, later that, on that, that evening, I, I took dinner out to the crews. And Cascade Pizza was the one that I, you know, asked them what they wanted and they said pizza. I said, well, how about Coconut Kenny's? They said, well, it's closed. Because they're on scene, I was calling them. Got Cascade Pizza out there. Had already paid for it. And when the delivery driver came out and met me, he said, I just want to let you know that when John found out where I was headed, he canceled your bill. So, here's your receipt for zero. And I got a second batch coming in 30 minutes. You know, and it wasn't just them. It was really, you know, up and down, broad support. It's just one of those times when it's so heartening to see the community come together. A couple items, there's been a lot going on. Last week, I got to host the Cities Insurance Association of Washington's annual retreat here in Skagit County. Fortunately, I had to, had to put them up in a hotel in a different community, but we did wrap up our annual meeting here in Seadrwelly and everyone had a great time. Last year, we were in Yakima, as I recall. And before that, we've, we go all over the state. That's the pool that ensures about 240 entities, fire districts, special purpose districts in cities, about a third in each category, and has been our insurance pool for a very long time, I think since it was first created. And I'm one of, I think there were seven board members representing the city on that. The mayor and I had occasion the week before to attend a community action event in the early hours of the morning, a Latino-Latina Advisory Committee listening session on issues affecting immigrant communities and specifically with regard to local government. And we were there along with representatives from the county and Mount Vernon. I think the group appreciated having Seadrwelly at the table and I think we learned something. I think it was beneficial. The last thing I wanted to mention is just to put on your dace. And I don't believe we need to go into executive session on this topic now, but a, a letter from Ironmark Law Group, an attorney representing Floyd Cannabis Company. When Floyd's moved into that location, we really don't have a great way of estimating marijuana demand. It's just too new. So, you know, when they look at the change of use from a physical therapy clinic to a marijuana retail store, you know, just using the standard trip generation modeling, they look at retail and come up with whatever their estimates are, there wasn't a, really a significant estimate of change. As you can see by their attorney's representations, they've become very busy with their sales. They've shared those in this letter. And what we've noticed in the community is that vehicles are, are making left turns from West State into the Floyd's parking lot, backing traffic up onto Highway 9. So, the engineering department responded to the concerns, developed a plan to install C-curbing in that location. The mayor put quite a bit of time into trying to communicate with Floyd, to help them understand the safety issue and at the same time, work with them to make this transition work. And the response we got was, was this letter yesterday, you know, essentially threatening litigation if we protect the public and, and safety. So, you know, I just want you to be aware of it. We, we get threatened pretty regularly with lawsuits. We get threatened much less regularly with lawsuits from lawyers. And obviously, we don't get sued very often. So, just like to keep you apprised and we'll take it seriously and look at the legal issues that they've raised. And if we need to, we'll certainly go and brief you in executive session about issues that are appropriately attorney-client related. And that's all I've got for tonight.
Patsy?
Today, we hosted a training session for other biased users, our accounting software within our region. And I wanted to report to the council that both attendees and the instructors were highly complimentary of the setup for the training room upstairs as well as our building. And we're quite impressed.
Thank you, Pat. Judith?
Keith, may I address what? Aaron, kind of stepping back to your topic on Floyd's here. Can they or do they have access to their parking lot from State Route 9?
They do, they do not have access from State Route 9. SR9 was designated a limited access highway by the Washington Department of Transportation decades ago when they planned to kind of reroute SR9, meaning that they, they just don't let you get onto the highway. So, they're treating it sort of like an I-5, which is, in my view, not super logical in our area, but that is the way it is. So, they've taken it so far that even the city had a real struggle to maintain access to our own stormwater facilities off of Merle, which is within the SR9 right-of-way corridor. And Mark went around and around with them about what those hash marks mean on those old plans. And they're, they're pretty strict on that. You know, looking at that, I, I think we all came to a conclusion that, that that would clearly be a safer alternative than the current practice. We just don't believe that Washington's likely to see it that way.
But we did offer to help the owner if he wanted to go that direction. We would support his request. We just don't think that it'll be approved.
You'd just have to buy the old Starkovich house and turn that into a parking lot, then.
Might be the next step. Okay, Judith.
I think I had something, but I forgot.
I'll give you another chance at the end.
I think I mentioned at the last meeting, but just this Saturday, Community Actions have a heart run. It's going to be at Edgewater Park. I don't have the, I guess you can get on their website and get the details, but that's this Saturday, the 29th.
Okay. Brendan? Brenda? Julia?
Um, kind of building on the Have a Heart. It's, it's, um, I think it's actually a great setup in that it's, registration starts at 8:15, so if you haven't signed up yet, you can actually do it there. And, um, I do believe that it starts at 9:00 or 9:30. But they have a 2K or 5K run, if you want to do that, or what I've always enjoyed is a 2K walk, because you can bring your dog, or you have kids with strollers, you can bring them along with and do that, too. So, it's always a great time.
Rick?
And, kudos to you again. Fantastic job.
Yeah.
Uh, whether you talk about it, but I'm going to beat you to the punch. Last Saturday, we had a nice dedication to Nathan's Wall out at Cascade Middle School, Evergreen. Had a crowd of, what, seventy-five people there?
Yeah, at least.
Or so. Nice crowd. Nathan, or Artie and Eleanor were just ecstatic with, with the event and things. I think they had that smile on his face from the picture in the paper, anyway. It was kind of cool, we're sitting there, and David Brick was talking, and here comes this eagle just flying over the thing. They mentioned it in the article, but it was cool just to watch that immature eagle just come and just kind of drift around and look at people and just, ongoing, so appropriate timing for that.
Yeah, you sort of blessed our ceremony there.
Yeah.
Anything else, Rick?
No.
Rick?
Um, Mark, I, I got a, a question from a resident at the ball end of Heather Lane about drainage issues. Um, I guess the water kind of pools at the ends there, and it's, it's possibly eroding their driveway, and want to know, I know she spoke with you before about maybe finding a solution to that, and wanted to know if the city has any plans for that drainage issue?
We have no plans. Uh, we, we have repaved the road in there to deal with, uh, settlement that was flooding water in the center of the road. Um, but there's literally no fix for that. Uh, the drainage system is a shallow, uh, set of storm drain catch basins that drain out over the bank and into the, uh, low areas to the south. Uh, but the catch basins are, uh, they're about fifty feet from where the road splits to go to the big, kind of double, um, cul-de-sac at the back there, and, and it's just too flat to carry all the water out. And so, at both, uh, if you can picture the cul-de-sac there, at both places where it turns and then goes down towards the catch basins, it just ponds on both of those. And so, there is no, literally no fix without putting a pump station in, uh, to try to do that, and, yeah, it's unfortunate, but that's the way it was built, and that's what they bought when they moved in there.
Okay. Um, and then second, maybe Aaron or Keith might know this. Jenny Keyfield, someone wanted to know who decides who plays there. It's the school district, is that right? So-
Well, they have a Playfields Association that had been very engaged, but ultimately, you know, the school district owns it and either manages it or manages it through the Playfields Association.
Okay. Okay, um, so, that, going back to the fire, I, I got to receive a lot of accolades for how well the city handled it, but the truth is, is I just happened to show up, uh, at this point in time when everybody was trained and equipped, um, and I had nothing to do with the prior planning, but, but Rick did. Rick was one of the guys who was on the hook when, uh, when they bought that ladder truck. And Mike Anderson did, um, and he took a lot of heat for it. It was too much money, it was stupid. He did it for his own business, a bunch of other false statements. And Dean did, because you pushed for the requirement. So, if we had not had that truck and, and the previous council and the previous mayor to, uh, push for that equipment, we would have likely lost that block. I, I believe that. So, um, if you, if you see Mike, or you see a former council member who was, who was around back then, who authorized the money when it was very unpopular and stupid, shake their hand, tell them thanks, because, um, that saved the town. And that's all I have this evening. Did you think of anything, Judith?
No, I just went right out of my head.
Okay, without objection, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming.